Do, okay.
Are you ready for the meeting? Are you shy?
I'll go.
So, you know the pledge.
You're going to accept the resume on behalf of the group.
How nice. Where is that at? Did you do have it?
Must have brought it back over here.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Well, I didn't.
I'm sorry. It's in my nice, my nice. Good morning, guys.
Morning.
Morning. Do you all want to lead us in the pledge from Woodmore Prescott when we stand?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna stand for the pledge. He's called the order.
The pledge.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the business will deliver its end.
Kenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wilty.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any corrections or additions to the agenda, commissioners?
Make a motion to accept. Play it all out. Make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the agenda.
We have a motion from Commissioner.
Oh, Carson.
Carson. I know Carson.
Oh.
From Commissioner Carson Bowie-Goy. We have a support.
Right. We have support.
Support. Ron Commissioner. What's your last name, honey?
Kelby.
Kelby. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, review of March 2nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Go ahead. Make a motion.
I make a motion to.
Accept the minutes.
To accept the.
Minutes. We have a motion to accept the March 2nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Do we have support?
Yes.
Support.
He's second?
Yep. Okay. What's your last name, honey? What is it?
Osha.
Osha? Hulshu. Oh, I know you too. Okay, we have a motion with support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, public comment and agenda items only. This is a first of two areas for public comment. The rules are state your name for the record, two, speak only to the chairperson, three, stand behind the podium when speaking, four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, we have correspondence. We received correspondence from Calhoun County, Clinton County, Chaboygan County, LaPirre County, Wieland County, Marquette County, Anna, Anna Gwin County.
Noggin.
I don't know. I have a noggin.
Tuscola County and Unemployment Insurance Agency related to notice of determination. Those have been received and filed. Item six, consent for agenda. I'd like to take these individually, commissioners.
I agree.
Item six A, resolution to declare March 9th, 2023 as Ogumah County Kids' Day. I'm gonna read this. Would you like to read this?
Well. But we make an emotion first. For this.
Let's read it first and then we'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Resolution to declare March 9th as Ogumah County Kids' Day. Resolution number twenty-three.
Sorry, there, honey.
Whereas the Ogumah County Board of Commissioners recognize today as kids as tomorrow leaders and whereas several youths were selected to participate in the Second Annual Kids' Day as a public official program in Ogumah County and whereas these participants were selected based on their individual behavior and educational excellence and whereas Ogumah County Government Departments, Probate Court, Thirty-Fourth Credit Circuit Circuit Court and Eighty-Second District Court will host student participants in this educational program. Therefore, it will be resolved that the Ogumah Board of Commissioners does hereby declare Thursday, March 9th, 2023 as Ogumah County Kids' Day. Be it further resolved that the board extends its official welcome to all student participants.
Nice job. We need a motion.
I motion to accept the resolution.
We have a motion with Commissioner Boeing though. Support from Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on that? Can we get a roll call vote?
Kenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wilty.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Resolution carries and we have actually the certificate here that I'd like to present to.
Kaylin Ritter.
Kaylin Ritter. Like a thing. Woodmore Prescott.
Beat me halfway.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something? Um. Item two, resolution to authorize software purchase. This. Where are we, guys? Right here. Six B. This resolution is sponsored by prosecuting attorney Ladonna Schultz and information technology director Tom Spencer. Success of the Ogumah County Prosecuting Attorney's Office relies upon streamlined daily tasks with work for it, workflow and collaboration standards that save time and simplify daily workload. Technical support for criminal case management software utilized by the prosecuting attorney will seize in the near future. After extensive review of available software options and its consideration of the county's information system capabilities, the prosecuting attorney and information technology director recommend purchase of a software package offered by Carpool Solutions. Approval of the resolution will authorize purchase of the software at a total cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars over two fiscal years.
We have a. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Boinko.
Yeah.
Yeah. Support from Commissioner Hulshu. Discussion?
Well, prosecutor laid low pretty well for us. So, I'm, I'm totally in favor.
What, Tim, did you have any further explanation on this? I know it was discussed at the last meeting.
Uh, no, other than what you've already seen, uh, Ladonna has followed up with the software company already to just confirm it's gonna do what she'd like to see it do, uh, but there's really nothing else new to report.
Where, where are we gonna cover these costs at? Cause this does not come out of their budget, correct?
Right now, the, um, initial payment, the roughly eighteen thousand five hundred both come from contingency. Um, we will, um, look at the, uh, the hard costs for, you know, the annual maintenance and the installation for twenty-four when we do the twenty twenty-four budget. That process will start, uh, probably, I just was looking at schedule yesterday at the end of April. Uh, but that will be something the prosecutor will include in their budget or will put it in the IT budget, uh, somewhere, but we'll make sure it's accounted for. Uh, the, the main thing today with approval of the resolution, it gets us in line for installation of the software. Uh, we understand that there are a number of counties who will be approaching the same vendor for software installation, so the sooner we can get in line, the better.
Questions, commissioners?
They will call the, roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wilty.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item six C, resolution to authorize migration to a new email platform. This resolution is sponsored by informational technology director Tom Spencer. Contemporary government and business operations depend on reliable email for communications among employees, constituents, and vendors. The current email platform utilized by Ogumah County has become less dependable over time, causing disruptions in standard operations. Found in a comprehensive review of available options, information technology director recommended migration to the office three sixty-five platform for all county email users. Approval of the resolution will authorize a change in email platform at a total cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars and your support cost associated with the office three sixty-five platform will be considered through the normal budget process. You have a resolution on the table?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mayhew.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Support by Commissioner Simmons. Any discussion?
I have none.
Oh. Tim, did you have anything you wanted to add to it?
I did reach out because we're starting higher with the number of licenses than the original twenty-five to see if there was another price break. I haven't heard back yet, but still, obviously it wouldn't seem to cost you. If anything, it'll be less.
So is this the same that you presented to us if the, this is gonna be cost per user, not per, is the exact same thing you presented to committee the whole?
Correct.
And twenty-one thousand dollars is gonna get how many users?
It'll get all of our users, hundred and twenty-two to email, and then the office three seven five, I think was, I think it was seventy-five out of the gate.
What's the annual cost?
Thirty-three thousand was total for everybody. For a year.
So we're gonna be able to budget this for next year? Roll call vote.
Charles Wilty.
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Kenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Resolution to appoint a member to the Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Board. Wanna read that? I'm sorry, there.
This resolution is sponsored by planning and zoning administrator Ryan Venter. The Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Ordinance was adopted on December fifth, nineteen sixty-nine under the Airport Zoning Act, Act Twenty-three of nineteen fifty, being MCL.
Two five nine.
Two five nine dot four three one at dot in each case where an airport hazard area exists in connection with publicity owned airport. The Board of Commissioners, each of each county involved must appoint three members and the operating agency and the Michigan.
Aironnetics.
Aironnetics Commission must each appoint one member to joint airport zoning board. Two of the members appointed by the Board of Commissioners of each county involved must be from a township or townships within which the hazard area, hazard area is located and one must be from that part of the county outside of the townships where the hazard area is located. Approval from of the resolution will name Ben Evergreen, Scott Bell, and Jeff Nichols to the Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Board for the terms ending on December thirty fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I'm gonna go there. Take this one.
Right now. Make a motion to appoint members of the Joint West Branch Community Airport zoning board. I think we had. Go ahead. You beat them.
I approve the resolution to appoint members to the Joint West Branch Community Airport Zone Board.
We have a motion, Commissioner Kelby, with support from Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on that? Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. No discussion, roll call vote.
Kenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Say, yeah.
Item seven A, we are under new business. Uh, this is Brian Gilbert, sheriff, related to vehicle purchases. The purchasing procedures policy limits department head purchases to fifteen hundred dollars. Purchases greater than fifteen hundred dollars but less than five thousand dollars require completion of an administrative contract authorization form. Section D dot six of the policy requires approval of the county administrator and all members of the claims and accounts committee in order to complete the purchase. On February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the sheriff's office submitted a form seeking purchase of a two thousand fourteen Chevy Impala for twenty-seven hundred dollars. The request purchase was not approved by members of the claims and accountants committee. The sheriff's office respectfully seeks Board of Commissioners approval of the requested purchase. Sheriff, you wanna come up and explain?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to introduce, uh, Brady. He's gonna be my shadow today. Um, and I'd like to welcome all of our Woodmore Prescott students. This is gonna be a fun day. We went forward to this, so. Uh, Brady, do you have anything you would like to add? Sixth grader, um, nothing. Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna have some fun today. Um. What I'd like to do is I'll bring, uh, Deputy Better, uh, ahead here and explain some things that are question and he's been.
Well, you're bigger shadows.
Pretty good, yeah. He's been working pretty hard on this. Um, basically, it was, it'd be nice to have, uh, another empower which would blend into the cars all there, uh, for our, um, undercover work. Uh, it's to, to grab some information or search warrant, uh, we could use that car to drive back and forth to school and keep the miles off our patrol cars. Um, if twenty-seven hundred dollars for that and the, the Impala that we do have, we could sell that and possibly recoup some of that money back into the account, so. Um, I'll let Deputy Better explain what you've been working on. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
Basically, like Sheriff said, I reached out to some federal entities and they own this twenty-fourteen Chevy Impala with twenty-one thousand miles on it. They wanted six thousand, three seven hundred. Um. That would replace the current Impala that we have, it's twenty-ten with a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles on it. Still runs good, needs a little work. But this other car would make a lot better vehicle. It would last us quite a while. Um, we're gonna have twenty-one thousand miles on it. Basically, we just gotta go get it and bring it back. We could drive it right away and, uh, cause we wouldn't, it wouldn't require any equipment. We're not gonna put nothing in it. The lights, no siren, nothing like that, so.
Go, go get it. Where's it at?
It's in Minnesota.
Oh, so this is just the, the price of the vehicle that's, that we're gonna have to pay for somebody to go get it?
Yeah, it's two hundred bucks for the flight ticket, hundred bucks for guests to get back. So. Seven hour drive.
How many vehicles we, I, Tim had sent us a list that was a little difficult to read. So we gotta update the list, uh, this morning. Do you may have any questions about this list? It's got even transit bus, which means what exactly, this is, this is not just a list for the sheriff's department, correct? This is just Ogumah County vehicles.
All vehicles.
Okay.
And you'd see rated in the center of the chief, uh, vehicles that are saying to the sheriff's office.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Now. First I heard, I heard a couple of different things that this may use for. Now, the sheriff just rounded it out and included all the things. First of all, I heard it was an undercover car. And I can understand needing to drive a plain looking car and, you know, um. And then, when I talked with you, it was a car to transport people around that need to go to training or something like that.
Yep.
Uh, are we gonna be able to use this in other parts of the county? Can, if we have the clerk's office, for instance, has two people going to a seminar, can we use this car for that?
I would, I would personally not recommend that because it should be in our lot accessible to us at any given time. You know, because we never know when we're gonna need it. So I, I would, I would ask that it would just be solely under our, our jurisdiction over there. I mean, that's, that's my thought.
And then the description you showed me said it needed quite a bit of maintenance, needed brakes. I kinda eighteen thousand miles. Whoever drove it just drove too footed.
It happens.
It happens. Eighteen thousand miles and needs brakes. And what else does it?
It could be more. They probably just were. That's.
How do we know what it is?
I don't know. I don't, I'm just.
We have no idea, so.
No idea. You're right.
Now, no lights or siren, but you gotta, you're gonna put a radio in it?
Yes. Put their radios.
So that's five grand.
No, we haven't done. We wouldn't put in a radio in that one.
Would you take the radio out of the other one?
We have a, we have a radio, an old radio sitting on the shelf, throw in it. So.
How many old radios you got on the shelf?
Right now, we have one.
Came out of the old animal control truck?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't have a radio.
Didn't even have one in it.
So.
What do you, to watch it talk, he was?
Handheld. Handheld, always says. Not, not very good. That's why the new brush could have a radio in it. So that's one of the, he's an appointment we're waiting on to get here. Or put in service.
How many total officers do you have?
We have thirteen.
So on this list, I have sixteen vehicles.
Yep.
So what are the extra three?
Well, they said that this way, we don't run them twenty-four seven. You know, we'll park them for twelve hours. We have an A and B rotation. So then vehicles aren't used all the time. It keeps the miles off and, you know, longevity will last longer, more vehicles you got. That way you can park them.
Commissioner Simmons?
Um, yeah, she talked about the brakes, about really be driven hard. That's, that's really cannot be a true story all the time because I bought a brand new car. It had less than twenty thousand miles on it and I had to put new bricks on it. And I am not hurt on cars.
This is driving.
I was kinda madder than I had her. When, when that, when that happened.
You?
I'm usually pretty calm, but not that day.
Just trying to make sure I heard you right. Go ahead.
But so, yeah, it can happen. The brakes can be like that. I mean, it happened to me on a brand new car. And I'm, and I don't rip and snort on my cars.
We wouldn't really know until we get back here, car mechanic, have him take a look at it. It may be something very minute.
Yeah. And the extra cars that the sheriff's department has also, they've got something down for maintenance. You gotta have another car to, for them to drive, so.
There was times, there were times over there that we didn't have enough cars. And I'd be waiting in the report room, waiting for our car to get done, completed with, uh, maintenance before I could even go on the road, so we didn't have a car available.
Right.
And, and with the support of, of you folks, we've moved beyond that. You know, I mean, it's very important to have good wheels there. Um, and we all know that, but we do thank you for your support, your continued support.
Right, but I mean, we've got quite a few. We got eight vehicles here, two twenty, two thousand twenty or newer. Um, I guess where did this vehicle come from? Is it?
It's a DEA vehicle.
What's that mean?
Drug Enforcement Administration.
Oh.
It's a federal car.
What's this, uh, what's this something that they, uh, they didn't buy? They, they absconded from some drug dealer, you think?
Who knows?
You don't.
They, they put it on GSX, which is government surplus that, um, that they sell them on. They don't, they don't need it, so they sold it. Um, again, we're not, we're not adding, we're just replacing one car with a hundred and seventy-five thousand with one with twenty-one thousand.
Um, you're, you're replacing an old car with an old car.
Essentially.
Uh, I'm wondering.
Miles wise.
Miles wise, yeah, I get that. I, I'm, I'm not against it. It's just why not buy something a little newer?
Well, you can't buy something newer for twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Oh, well, I get that.
I mean.
But I'm not, I'm not, that's not my concern is dollar amount. It's, it's buying, am I buying a lemon? Am I buying, I'm buying a cheap car? Or just an expensive car? You know, I don't know, but.
Isn't there plans and for next year for, how many vehicles are in the plans for next year's purchase? So we have two more plans to get two more vehicles on this list of sixteen.
We're gonna probably. They'll be rotating out. We're gonna rotate. My car, my car right now that I'm driving's got a hundred and forty-seven mile on it.
The car I drive got two hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, that's a good car.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
So anyway, Brady, Brady and I are presenting that to the folks. Um, you can vote on it, yes or no, and then we'll move on, so.
Hey, perfect.
We just presented it to you and that's what we're requesting.
Well, one of the things that's, like I say, you know, I it'd be cheaper if we had three people in the county that need to go to the same training seminar, whatever it was, it's cheaper for us to put them in one vehicle than pay three different mileages, you know, so. I don't know why the, the sheriff's office can't share this vehicle with, with the rest of the county. Uh, I mean, it's an exception, not the rule that, that they're gonna use it. We're not, we're not gonna have people going over there every day.
Craig, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you, no, we won't do it, you know, on, on, on exceptions, we probably would do that. You know, we would do that. We accommodate our people. And when I say our people, I mean, our, our whole commu, our whole people at Worth County people. We can accommodate. I, I just don't, I personally don't want it every day because when I, when we got something hot that we gotta roll on, I don't wanna be looking for a car, for that car, and it's, it's white in color.
Yeah, I, I know, I know.
We thought of you.
I know.
Directly, we thought of you.
I know. I know. I know. That was, that was provided to me right away.
I know. I'm not saying we won't do it. I'm just saying that.
It's just a shame that it won't say sheriff's office on it, so they recognized that it came from, from the Ogumah Sheriff's Department, you know.
Any, any further discussion, commissioners?
I just had.
But Commissioner, what's it?
So, so we know we have a fixed cost of twenty-seven hundred. We know it's gonna cost three hundred dollars to mobilize it back over here, and then there's possibly brake issue, right? Awesome. So, so we all know what our current market is with used vehicles. I mean, I know this is a little older vehicle, but twenty-one thousand miles, Chevy Impala. Good vehicles. They've made them for a long time. Um, I support this. I think it's a smart move. Sell the other car. Car's running. I mean, we probably can get fifteen hundred bucks, twelve hundred bucks.
We look now, anything, if it runs and moves, it's worth three grand. All day long is what they're getting.
I don't think it'll take much to sell that vehicle. I mean, I think this is kind of a no-brainer. I think it's, it's great that you're looking into that site. I think we should, uh, move forward with it, for sure.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, I thought we already did. I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, we didn't.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, by the two thousand fourteen, um, Chevy Impala for the sheriff's department.
We have a motion. Commissioner Simmons?
That's my motion.
Support from Commissioner Hulshu. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
They know this type. They know.
No.
You can say it louder. It's all right.
Right out there.
They're not gonna come after you. Don't worry.
Kenny David?
No.
Roger Mayhew?
Yeah.
Charles Wilty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven B claims. We have claims in the, thanks, guys. We have claims in the total of two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Who reviewed claims?
I did.
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons, who gets four?
I didn't see, um, anything except of, um, my understanding is that, um, the maintenance office is changing. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, that will likely roll out here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Um, does he already have a desk in, in his current office?
He does.
Then why does he need to buy another one?
Um, there was discussion about that this morning. I'm not sure he bought one. I certainly didn't authorize.
Claims.
Uh, but it's just.
Uh, but it's just, uh, maintenance, Chris Casey.
Okay.
Uh, I think the desk, if I remember the conversation this morning, right, is actually one of the district court for the district board administrator.
Why is it under?
What's the cost?
I can't remember.
We can find it here.
Uh, it, it was in a folder and the whole thing, uh, under, under maintenance, I think.
We're right here, seventy.
Sixty-five, so it should be.
You all okay?
Discuss.
I guess.
We got this little iPad that comes through everything here, too.
Well, courthouse and grounds, the whole, the whole bill is of eleven hundred dollars, I don't know of that, how much is the desk?
What page?
The desk was a couple hundred bucks, I think, a little over a couple hundred bucks, I just wondering why we need another desk? Since he's already has one, and why is it under? Grounds of Maintenance. Perfect gives.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of courts.
If that's what it is, I'm not sure, my understanding is even accurate.
I mean. I approved it, my question was, I mean, I, I signed up on a, on a. But my question is, why does he need another desk, he already has one?
We could track him down and have him in here, if you can explain that.
That would be nice.
We have, uh, West Branch Pharmacy, I thought we were going to Myers now, are we, in Myers, are we still utilizing West Branch Pharmacy? Do we know?
Myers.
It's just twenty-five hundred dollars for West Branch Pharmacy for the jail service.
But we have not moved to Myers yet.
We haven't?
We have not.
Yeah, because we just approved that, just.
No, we approved the automated system.
Yeah.
We didn't approve the pharmacy.
Right.
St. Helens Powersports, that's for Snowville repairs. There's, whoa, a couple of them on here.
Helmet got purchased.
Three hundred and twenty-nine and two sixty-three?
Three twenty-nine was the helmet. Uh, I can't remember what the two sixty-three was.
I don't see anything else on there, any other questions?
Um, the biggest, the biggest, uh, half, al- almost half the claims was Jack Morris Construction for, uh.
Yeah.
For the, uh, annex building, so. Uh, that was a big difference, and then, uh, we had, uh.
Grabbing lawsuits, twelve thousand.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, what was the, uh?
Cameras for thirty-three.
Um, what was the deal with the Motorola again?
That was our radios, the sheriff's office.
Yeah, but it was animal control and.
I think it was part.
And jail too, there was six, six radios.
I think that's part of the USDA grant, it was.
Right, wasn't it, yeah, that was thirty-three, thirty-three thousand dollar purchase.
That construction is up for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, what, what, what did that cover exactly?
About sixty percent of the total cost, uh, that, that they've incurred for the project, so they've already done, uh. Uh, full ceiling grid is finished now, the new lights are installed, uh, they are still waiting on doing some insulation, a lot of the painting has been done already. Uh, still have some work on the gutters on the outside to be done, uh, so as we're talking about this, I would encourage any commissioner to walk in over there, it is a completely different. Environment than what it was in vast improvement.
I was over there last night, I go there, walking is much brighter.
I miss the orange door, so.
I don't.
I do not. Uh, and the employees seem very happy, we had a nine-one meeting over there this night. Any other questions?
Do we go any further with the desk thing?
I did send Chris a text message and asked him to come down to the meeting. Don't know where he is.
Are you okay moving forward, Commissioner Simmons, or would you prefer to wait to?
No, we, we just moved forward, I was just curious why, why the desk, but you said it could be going up the courts and. I just saw it there and I thought. She already had a claim.
Right. Get his credit.
I make a motion to set the claims. We have a motion from Commissioner Wolinko, do we have support?
Supported.
Support from Commissioner Colby to pay bills for two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
He's got a credit card.
Roll call vote.
Yes. Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltse?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
I don't see February budget report.
I wanted to point this out to the board as a, a new format, um. About midway last year, commissioners had asked for a budget report that showed not only the status of the current year's budget, but. How it compares to where we were last year on spending. Uh, the BSNA system, uh, is, is very good, but one thing it, it doesn't do very well is try to. Collect two years' worth of data at once and put it on a single spreadsheet, so. Uh, figured it out that, uh, we can download all of our BSNA data to Excel, so what you see in front of you is the product of an Excel spreadsheet that, uh. Shows our current year, uh, what the current budget is, but the expenditure is for each line item and the percent of that budget that's been spent. At the top, you'll see that we are at forty-one point seven percent of the year, so that's kind of a gauge, so you can get an idea of where we are in terms of the overall spending for each one of these lines. And then you've got the fiscal year twenty-two data, this is a very, uh, shall we say, long document because it does show you each line item. But it gives you that information now so that you can track for perspective, now it also pointed out that certain lines, uh, and I, and on that very first page, about five down, you see that swamp tax revenue. Uh, that's already pretty well collected for the year, that's unusual, most of the things you would expect to be paced out throughout the year, but taxes are collected at a specific, uh. Uh, moment throughout the year and they're all collected now, at least everything that we have budgeted for. You get down into some of the expenditures, you'll see things like subscriptions and memberships in some departments, those all become do it the first of the year, so they might expend that entire line item. Others, they're paced, I, uh, with the comparison of the prior year, you get an idea of, of where some of those, uh, rules sort of apply. You have not only the general fund, but you also have all of those special funds on this document as well. And this is, um, exactly what I will be using when we do our next quarterly budget adjustment to recommend adjustments, but you'll have this now as well. This will be reproduced for you once a month, uh, hopefully by the time the first regular meeting rolls around so that you'll have it. Uh, and you will, you know, it's, it's very detailed, you'll have every line that, that's been approved. Now, another good thing about this exercise was, as I went through this, I did note that we have a few. Uh, activities that we don't, still don't have a budget for, and these are, uh, activities that are not, shall we say, very dynamic. Uh, in, in some cases, there's just, uh, uh, some interest that might have been earned or a bank charge that came in for a couple of dollars. Okay, so we'll clean all those up at the end of the year, but there are others in here, uh, like we did with the last quarterly amendment, uh, we will find these, we will have. Formal budgets adopted for them, and then when we do the twenty-four budget, we will have captured those and they'll be part of that regular process. So that's there for your, um, uh, review and, and, you know, have fun with it, it's a document that you could get lost in for a couple of hours if you want to, I don't recommend it, but you could. Uh, but it does give you, if you have any question about an item that comes in front of you, you've got the budget report right there in front of you, you've got a pretty good idea of where the spending lies. And can make, uh, very educated decisions based on the information you see.
I appreciate this. Questions on it, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, I was, uh, uh. I know the sheriff department, he has an, another, uh, it has a commissary fund.
Right.
So. What are we doing in the commissary fund, what's the sheriff department doing with that?
So that's, uh, Fund, uh, five ninety-five, if I remember, see, I'm starting to recognize these by number. Uh, that fund is, uh, used, uh, obviously to offset costs related to the jail.
Yeah.
And so you do see a large, um, transfer of funds from that commissary fund to the jail, offset some of those costs. We also have programmed in there the costs for things that are sold through commissary, one of the. Popular items are, you know, may not have the terminology right, but it feels vape cigarettes, the e-cigarettes. Uh, they sell those, but they don't sell them at price, they, they, uh, uh, sell them for. Little bit of a profit, so those profits, then you'll see, uh, budget as well, or you recognize coming into that. Um, the other item that's budgeted for this year was the purchase of a transport van that's in that budget as well. Uh, and that's it, that's a pretty small. Budget, you know, it comes to the number of lines that it has.
How much is in there right now, do you know?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't, it, it's, I don't wanna say flush, but it has a, a pretty decent fund balance.
Hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, more than that.
Oh.
I see, we, we've discussed overtime numerous times in the past, and I see, I'm looking at the corrections right now, and they're doing very well with overtime. They had seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted and they're only at twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, so that's good, very good.
So. This, this car that we just moved. What fund does that come out?
That's actually programmed to come out of the sheriff's office.
Okay.
In a line that's in there.
Yeah.
And I'll be speaking to the sheriff about that, about what we need to do with, uh.
So, um. Didn't the sheriff's office want a, a body scanner also?
That is a proposal we'll talk about when we do the ARPA meeting at the end of the month, actually for the jail, and they would like to, uh, purchase that for people being brought in.
Do you have any idea how much, uh, much, uh, a, a resource like that would cost?
Do you have, uh, estimates, they were, uh, not too much lower than two hundred thousand, as ever called.
So can we use part of the commissary fund to do that, I mean, I don't know if the sheriff wants to do that or not.
You could. It would be justifiable, sure.
So. All right, I was just questioning about, because I remember the commissary fund and I. So it's, it's a nice fund to have.
Yes.
So, all right, that's my one question.
I see, and overtime for the sheriff's, we're budgeted at ten thousand, we're already at ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-five. Right, looking at that, right, so we're at one oh seven and we're halfway through the year?
Um, I did, um, look at that with, uh, uh, with the undersheriff, and we did put in to, um. Uh, clerk's office in request to move some of the expenses, correct some of the expenses, because they were actually road patrol fund expenses, so they'll be moved out of there. But that fund, or there, that line is still fairly high for this time of year, uh, the undersheriff and I talked about that, we'll be bringing, uh. A proposal in, uh, at a later date to. Discuss that.
Discuss.
Discuss the overtime line and what we'll be doing about the, about the expenditures coming out of there.
Yeah, because it looks like on the road patrol, there's no, there's nothing for overtime, is it correct, am I looking at that right?
Uh, you may not be on the right road patrol, it'll be Fund two fifty-nine, and it's at least. Do it here, some page twenty-seven or forty-four, actual road patrol mileage. Uh, the overtime there is at forty-seven percent right now, twenty-one thousand, one ninety-seven out of forty-five thousand budgeted.
What percent?
Forty-one, or sorry, forty-seven point one.
I guess I must be missing something.
Page twenty-seven?
Yeah, my page twenty-seven.
So there's an overtime line. Here, so forty-five thousand budgeted, twenty-one thousand, one ninety-seven.
Yeah, I see, I got it, I got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, we're gonna continue to get these monthly, Tim?
Get them monthly, yes.
We are going on to. Item eight, unfinished business.
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Yes.
Uh, Chris was it?
Yeah. Do you wanna discuss the desk now?
I'd just like to know.
Mr. Casey, can you come on up, Commissioner Simmons had a question for you.
I mean.
Good morning, thanks for coming.
Then you can just go back. I, I noticed that you requested, uh, I was doing claims, that there was, uh, for a desk.
I didn't know. You guys, let me address. I thought too, we'll track it down, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I got two in my boiling room, then I'm trying to get.
That's what I thought, I thought, why would you want another desk, I know I saw it claimed.
Okay.
Now, unless my eyes are crossed or something, but I don't think so.
We'll track it down, this is.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Might have been quoted to the wrong department.
It may have. Eight, eight, unfinished business, resolution to authorize juvenile center. We need a motion to.
I'll make a motion, take it off the.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott. We have a support to take it off the table.
I'll support that.
Motion from Commissioner, support from Commissioner Wiltse to remove the resolution to authorize juvenile center off the table. Any discussion?
What is the motion exactly now?
To remove it, we have to make the motion to move her off the table, then we'll talk about the motion itself.
Okay, thank you.
We have a roll call vote to remove this off the table.
Roger Mayhew?
Yeah.
Charles Wiltse?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes. Item eight, a resolution to approve participation in collaborative, collaborative juvenile facility feasibility study. Start reading right there, all the way down to there.
County governments in Michigan are responsible for providing county-based programming for child welfare and juvenile access. And placement costs for youth involved in juvenile process cases. Unpredictable programming and placement costs are reimbursed by the state at fifty percent for eligible costs. Qualified placement facilities are increasingly difficult to locate, and the cost of construction and operation of. Juvenile placement facility is prohibitive for smaller northern Michigan counties. Approval of the revolution, resolution will authorize Ogumon County's participation in the co- collaborative juvenile facility. That's still a.
Feasibility.
Feasibility study and accept, for, accept a proposal submitted by. Brano, Entrevases to conduct the feasibility.
Feasibility study.
Feasibility study at a cost to exceed.
Not to exceed.
To, not to exceed. Five thousand.
That was top, wasn't it?
Great job.
Absolutely. It's a big, big work. We have a, would anybody like to entertain a motion?
I'm just trying.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to, uh, the resolution to. To, to spend the money for a feasible.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott, do we have support?
I'll support that.
Motion for Commissioner Wiltse, discussion.
Right, this, this is just a study, that's all it is, and it's using professionals to do it. Five counties now, Tim?
Five total.
This is a major problem across the state, these costs have gone up at year over year over year. Now you got five counties that are willing to collaborate together. To, to take a look at it, not to build anything. Just to take a look at it, how much would it cost? Do you have to build? There may be options where we wouldn't have to build. A couple of years ago, I was in discussions with, with the, uh, Robert Snyder, the chairman of Ross Common County. Commissioners. He made the, he made this suggestion, what if we took the adult inmates out of. Two jails and put them in one jail and take the other jail and make it into a detention center for juveniles? Wouldn't have to build anything. Could that happen? I mean, we can, we can. We can just ask somebody on the street and they can tell us, oh, you can't do it, or we can have some professionals do a study and tell us if it's feasible or not. Five thousand dollars, you're talking about half of, half of a percent of our total budget. We just got done approving over a hundred thousand dollars with the cost for other things.
I've got it.
So there?
Yeah, right now, Brenda's got.
I was waiting till you were done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Wiltse, did you have anything?
Tim, were you able to get, uh, some numbers on what our costs have been the last few years?
I did, uh, Michael was able to provide me with figures, going back to fiscal year eighteen, if you wanted to do that, because, uh, as I go over these, you'll see fiscal years twenty and twenty-one were, were impacted with COVID. So in eighteen, we spent eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, in fiscal year nineteen, it was seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Fiscal year twenty, fifty-six thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy cents, uh, twenty-one, it was fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, in twenty-two, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty cents. Uh, twenty-one, it was fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars in twenty-two, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and thirty cents. Uh, so looking at these figures, uh, we can probably reasonably budget for somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty thousand a year, but that's going to be increasing as other costs and everything else will go up, uh, in future years. And that was specifically for the, you know, the placement costs.
Not the transportation cost, right?
Nothing else.
We transported all these people and paid people to transport them. So there's other costs. Just don't take the first number. There's other costs built into this.
Commissioner Simmons.
Right. Well, I look at these figures for eighty-eight, seventy-nine, fifty-six, seven, eighty-eight. That's a, that's a lot cheaper than the millions that's going to cost for this. Plus what it's going to cost to operate this thing. You know, that's hiring all the people to do the work. Uh, all the utilities. Uh, I don't, I don't think it's worth it. I, I'd rather spend the eight FY eighty, spend eighty-eight thousand dollars to send these youngsters someplace else than spending millions of dollars. Um, for a facility that is going to cost way, way too much.
How do you know that? How do you know what's going to cost millions?
Because I looked at the figures that Mr. Mayhew passed out last time. He doesn't pull them out of the air. He got them.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Finish. Commissioner Scott, let her finish.
Okay.
And it's yours.
All right. We don't know where he pulled them.
Mr. Scott.
Okay.
Commissioner Simmons, are you completed?
No.
Go ahead.
I want to talk. Watch as he goes.
Professional, please.
I know, I'm just being smart.
Mr. Mayhew.
Uh, the Child Protective Service, as far as I know, is changing their status on taking the kids out of the home. They are talking, leave the kids in the home and improve the home.
Yeah.
So that's already going to take a toll on the kids that are going to go to here. The state is, is doing this. It's not us. And them numbers come right off of Google. They ain't something I dreamt up. If you want to study it up, go on your computer and, and you come up with the numbers.
Okay, because you were asked last meeting, where the numbers.
Mr. Scott, he wasn't done.
Yeah, my wife does stuff for me. She don't do stuff for you.
I didn't say, I didn't say anybody.
Are you?
And, but anyways, the state is coming down the pipe and the people know this that are in, in charge of that. So you're going to build something that's already outdated.
What if you didn't have to build it?
Commissioner Scott, did you want to add something now?
Well, you know, last meeting, he produced this report to us and we, and you asked him exactly where did this come from? And he said he didn't want to tell us. Now he says it comes from Google. Um, but four other counties think there's a problem. Four other local counties and other counties, according to this report. Genesee County thinks there was a problem. Ross Common County, Grand Travers, Leavonaw County, Midland County, Bay County, all these counties think they have an issue. Ogumah County, we don't have an issue.
I, I don't have, I wait till you're finished and then.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't, you know, we're pulling, we're pulling numbers out of the sky and not of Google.
Right now.
Or believe in Google. We might as well look it up on Facebook too.
Right now, I think what we're talking about is just the five thousand dollars.
That's all we're supposed to be talking about.
Mr. Scott, are you complete?
Go ahead.
So I see pros and cons to this five thousand dollars. Um, so now you're talking about five counties. So that's twenty-five thousand dollars just for a feasibility study. I mean, I think it's great as far as collaborating and networking with five other counties. I think that's eventually where we're going to have to head from a financial standpoint. Um, I just feel that the timing of the study is, I don't think it's going to be a reliable or valid study because of the timing, because the last two point five years, almost three years now has been COVID related. So everything has, has shifted and changed. So I don't feel these numbers and, and this information that they're going to receive is going to be accurate. Um, my other, my other concern with this is, is we just put that daytime treatment center up. So how accurate it is, hasn't been, what's it been up and running? Five months? Four months?
Within the last year.
We we invested a lot of money on that. We don't know how much money that's going to save us. So how, how accurate is this study going to be for Ogumah County right now? We also have, I would like to participate in this a hundred percent. We have individuals in place that could gather information, the administrator, the secretary, um, the courts. As far as throwing five thousand dollars into this, we have individuals that I feel could gather this information that they need. My other issue is if this is, it is obviously a, a, a need. I, I think it is, but I don't foresee Ogumah County having the financial stability to support a building um, in the future. I see the pros and cons to this. Um, I, I just think the timing, in my opinion, is off because I don't think it's going to be a valid study at this point. So that's our opinion, mine and yours. Any further discussion?
So I mean, I made it very clear on my stance on this. Again, um, we all understand that construction costs are extremely high. Anything you build. Um, I think the numbers that we received, as much I appreciate them from Commissioner Mayhew. They're not an apples for apples. If we're going to build a facility in Midland or build a facility in Grand Travers, it's a completely different facility than we would build for around here. Lot of different requirements, a lot less people. Um, I think the big thing we got to look at is what is the value of a collaboration with five other neighboring counties? When we know how important consistent collaboration with our counties are. It's five thousand dollars. I think we're going to be really shunning them and I think it's an opportunity for us to do that collaboration on, on a very important topic. And again, I understand it's five thousand dollars. But I just think we're really going to miss the boat here by not doing this collaboration. Um, and I really, really think that we should move forward with this.
I basically, my decision, I didn't even, I'm going to be brutally honest. I didn't even look at that piece of paper that Mr. Mayhew gave to us. I didn't feel like it was something that was even valid to this decision. This decision is not on those numbers. This decision is based on a five thousand dollars contributing to a study. So I didn't even, I didn't even look at those numbers. Um, that wasn't even a thought process. The thought process in my mind is, is are we going to be able to financially support a building in the future? But as far as cost wise, how much it costs to build a building? That, I'm not basing that on my decision whatsoever. Um, I, I, I don't see how we would be able to financially support it. But again, my timing, I would like to, to participate, but I, I think we have individuals here that are able to provide whatever data they would like from Ogumah County versus spending five thousand dollars. So.
Well, like I said, again, the value of the collaboration, I think, is well over five thousand dollars, but.
Agreed. And hopefully we can, we can continue with collaboration in the future. We did with, uh, Gladwin County, not, not too long ago. We met and had a luncheon and some discussion and about what their controller, we'd had a, a generalized meeting. It was before the new commissioners joined. It was last fall. It, it was a very informative, very good meeting.
Commissioner David, yes, we can say that we will continue and I hope we do, but everyone looks back at these things. Uh, you know, they look back at a decision that we made compared to four other counties that all feel that they should do this. This really is going to put us in a, in a tough spot when it comes to certain ways they're going to look back at things and say, oh, Ogumah County, man, they couldn't free them five thousand dollars on such an important item. They couldn't even come to the table and support this. I just really think that we're making a really wrong mistake by not supporting those.
What, what other surrounding counties that are participating?
The other counties are Gladwin, Ross Common, Crawford and Alpena.
So Aaron X. Not, I ask goes not, Russ Common is?
Russ Common is, yes. Those, those four counties have, um, you know, had margins to participate, uh, at the five thousand dollar rate.
There's Gladwin, Ross Common, Crawford and Alpena.
Yes.
Chair.
Please.
I'm not in favor of just building a building without funding. I'll say that right now. School systems don't build buildings unless they have bonds voted on by the people. I'd like to throw, have a feasibility study. What was the role of the I's there? I, I'd like to do a feasibility study. If they come up with a cost of a building, then we put it to the voters. If the voters say they don't want to do it, then we don't do it.
It was Alpena, Gladwin, Crawford. I missed, I missed.
Yeah. Gladwin, Ross Common.
Rest comment.
Yeah.
Do you know how many, do you know how many, um, they reached out to?
I don't, I, I.
So we don't know how many actually disagreed with this or wasn't able to find five thousand dollars.
Believe they reached out beyond the counties, both the core five. Um, it started with Gladwin County. They sort of coordinated it and had a meeting, uh, back in December that we weren't able to participate in. Uh, that included Clare County and gosh, I want to say Aaronak. I could be wrong. Uh, Clare County decided not to, um, why? I'm not sure. Um, like I said, I think there was another county that attended as well, but these four have committed. And this is on the table for us as the fifth.
Any further discussion?
Oh.
Commissioner.
Bear County may have pulled up because they're trying to pass a millipede right now to build a new school.
Maybe. I, I don't know what direction it was.
So.
Any further discussion?
I know.
Roll call vote.
No.
No. Yes. No. Item HB, any unfinished business? Item nine, administrator's report.
Okay, I'm drawing your attention back to the correspondence, that last one from the unemployment, uh, agency. Uh, that's, uh, an important one for us. Uh, commissioners who've been hired last year, and we talked about the unemployment situation that we had with some volunteers. Uh, we discovered at that point that we were a paying county, not a reimbursing county at that point. And we were one of only two counties that were not in the reimbursement category. So in other words, we were paying through the unemployment insurance agency every month, uh, to be covered. So, uh, back in, uh, about November, uh, with the December deadline, I did send a letter to the unemployment insurance agency asking to change our status to reimbursing. Uh, their letter, I think it was dated February twenty-seventh, granted that, uh, to reimbursing, uh, effective on January one. So retroactive to the first of the year. This means that moving forward, we no longer have to make those payments to the unemployment insurance agency. However, if we do ever have a situation where we need to lay somebody off, that's the point at which we'll pay and we'll pay that actual cost for the individuals who might be subject to layoff and not paying in advance in anticipation of a layoff, frankly, has not happened here in anyone's memory. Uh, you know, that, um, has participated with, with the county. Uh, now we do run into situations, uh, in personnel management over the years. Sometimes, uh, somebody is like, oh, or what have you, and there may be some debate as to whether they are eligible for an unemployment benefit. Uh, that's all handled now though, in this, as a reimbursing, if the unemployment agency makes that final determination that they are, that's when we start to pay. We don't pay every month. So this should be a significant cost saver for us moving forward, uh, into the future. Uh, there was, um, in, in their letter of determination, uh, when they originally received our application, there was a discussion of we may need to have additional data or additional information from the county. Uh, because our records aren't complete. Well, it turns out our records were totally complete. We didn't have to provide anything else. So this was a pretty easy determination for them to make. Uh, so kind of a big deal for us. Uh, we'll actually see it, I think, uh, mostly, uh, the, the impact. We'll see when we start working on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We'll actually be able to put some dollars to you and, and you'll be able to see what that savings is. Two, uh, committees, I'm going to ask to activate. The first will be the Personnel and Policy Committee. That's, uh, Vice Chair Simmons and Chair David. Uh, I have finally, uh, completed a draft personnel manual for our non-union employees. I will give the copy of that draft in your hands. And then I'd like to have a meeting with you and we'll go over what's in there and make modifications as necessary, uh, and get it in circulation. This will hopefully replace a manual that is now twenty-three years old and has seen very little, uh, modification over twenty-three years and was, uh, in dire need for some updating the same dollars.
What is this document?
This is the Personnel Manual for the Non-Union Employees.
Right.
So we'll, like, term them as the, uh, Management and Confidential Employees. And we'll talk about that distinction when we have our meeting. The second will be the Negotiating Committee, Commissioner Scott and Vice Chair Simmons. Uh, my contract is actually going to be due here, uh, in about about eight weeks. Uh, so I'd like to get that scrolling on that and maybe get that knocked out before, uh, the deadline happens. Uh, so two committees will get with you and get schedules and get all that coordinated. A heads up for the next committee, the whole meeting next week on the sixteenth. Two items will be on the agenda. The first one, I received a call from Monte Ballis at, uh, direction of the chair. Uh, he would like to talk to the board about the camp railing expansion. Uh, sounded very knowledgeable on the phone, uh, kind of wound them up a little bit. And, uh, yeah, so it should be an interesting presentation. Uh, the second item, just to give you the heads up, um, we do have an RFP out right now for medical examiner services. We will have the documents or the, the proposals for you at that meeting. I do have, uh, three, uh, vendors, uh, that have been very active in terms of gathering information. Expect we'll have, uh, uh, as many as three, maybe more proposals for that service. And then finally, the, the heads up at the March twenty-seventh regular meeting, uh, it's a five-thirty meeting. We will have the audit presentation for fiscal year twenty-two at that meeting. Uh, don't have any, uh, indication from the auditor about anything that's going to be in there, other than that's the date that they've asked to present. That concludes my report.
Perfect. We have item ten, elected official and department head reports. Say clerk. Clerk.
Good morning. Brett Gildner, Ogumah County Clerk. This is Scarlett. She's the clerk for the morning. She's going to give my department update. The clerk's office is back to fully staffed and we have gone back to normal thirty-five hours a week. We have a couple jury trials coming up at the end of the month and a ten-day jury trial in April. We are anxiously waiting to find out if, if and when we will have an election this year. On behalf of the clerk's office, we would like to thank Mr. Carrera for his dedication and we wish him enjoyment with his next adventure in life.
That's it. Thank you. Any questions for the clerk?
Done.
Thank you. Our treasures.
Good morning, Ogumah County Treasurer, and this is my helper today, Cheyenne, who's going to be the report, the treasurer's office. The treasurer's office is busy for proceeding a twenty twenty-two tax settlement with our local unit of government. The twenty-twenty tax year will be more close at the end of March. If anyone still owes twenty-twenty taxes, they need to contact the treasurer's office by the end of the month.
Any questions? Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
I don't, I don't have anything to bring forth. I already spoke about that, but I just want to, I just want to thank you, Brad, for just letting us know about. We really, really appreciate it. Brady, you got anything to say? We good?
I've been talking all the time.
Thank you. Equalization Department, do you have anything?
I'm Randy Booth, the Equalization Director, and, uh, everything's going well. Border review for most of the townships will be next week and so we will, uh, start all the fish reports for equalization session in April, soon as we get the information from the townships. This is Justin. He's helping me today and shadowing me around.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, boy. This is Lagan. He's with me today. Uh, Tom Spencer, Information Technology Director. I do all the computer work here, uh, card swipes on the doors and things. He can be my helper today. He's running the Zoom right now. And when we get done with the meeting, he's going to go back and put it on YouTube.
Perfect. Thank you. He keeps us up and running. I see the housing commission is here. Do you have anything?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, Leanne Fisher and the Program Manager for the County Home Student Program. This is my shadow today. Name is Ray. Uh, we've been going over the process that would go through to collect information from clients, whatever they call or home repairs on their home. Uh, so I think you got the gist of it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reader? Mr. Veder? Anything?
Just real quickly, we are just getting prepared for spring here in the zoning department, and the only question I have for you is, where's my helper?
Uh, on the phone, Mr. Nichols?
You hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, yep, uh, just want to let you know, we're officially over here at the old state police building, and we're up and operational, so. Believe the, uh, paper's coming over today or tomorrow to just do a quick interview with us.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, have a good one now.
To Denise? Any other elected officials and department heads on the phone? Did I miss anybody in the room? I think so. Item eleven, manners from the floor, are there any commissioners? Well, motions for adoption? Item thirteen. Yep. My just.
Commissioner, our report.
Commissioner Reports, say Commissioners and its.
Commissioners and its.
Well, my first?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I didn't get my stuff, bring it down past that, so. I would like to have, um, a couple of things, I'd ha- I'd like to have, um, the vehicle insurance put on the agenda for, uh, the sixteenth committee's whole meeting, uh, for, for vehicle insurance. Uh, I was at the West Branch Township meeting last night, and they were asking again about the, the property on the corner of Dan Road and Ninety-Five. So can we discuss that, please, as a whole meeting too, please? Parks and Rec, we had a meeting yesterday, we elected the, uh, officers, uh, Mr. Scott's chair, and I'm the vice chair, and I'm glad Ellen Pugh's there, she's the secretary. And, uh, I talked to, uh, the treasurer about the credit card, and, uh, it was put, uh, it will be in our minutes from our meeting yesterday, and I will give that to Karen. So we could start transferring that credit card from, uh, the old, uh, the old, uh, person to, to me. Cause I'll be holding that credit card then, so, um, and I will get that to you as soon as I can. Does that have to be approved by all of us first before you can do anything? Okay. Okay. And another thing I was thinking that, uh, and I've talked this before, and I've talked to it at school before, meeting people by chance, about, uh, having people who are elected to office, maybe we may have an opportunity to go and, uh, talk to a class out at the high school about what we do, what the importance of it is. And it's not all of us at once, like the treasurer go one time, uh, the reg- and I've talked to a couple of the, uh, the offices and, and they thought, it sounded like it was a good idea. You know, the register's office, the sheriff's department, commissioners, stuff like that, but not all go at once, just one at a time. Cause I think each office is really important to this county, and I would like to have the, the students, uh, if we get a chance to go out there and do that. Uh, the students have questions and answers, so they can, uh, have time rather than just brush through it. Like when we were introduced to this kind of commissioner, that was really fast and furious. But I would like to have these students to understand government at the local level, so they know what really goes on here, rather than not, probably not even thinking about it, really. So, that's, that was my little project yesterday. Uh, and I talked with, uh, the county clerk, uh, Brett Gilner about that too, we discussed it yesterday, and we just think it'd be a good idea, don't we think it's be a good idea?
I think it's a great idea.
There we go. So we, we were talking about it yesterday, just out of blue, and so I, um, followed up on it yesterday, and they're looking into it, so. Waiting for the administration to give a, and if, and if it does happen, it would be after spring break. And it would be scheduled, so I would coordinate the schedule with, with all of you if this happens. So what would be a good day for you, a good day for you to, to, to go, and who's going to go? And, and two of you can go from the office, you know, uh, support each other in front of all those kids. So I just think it's a good idea. I think, um, Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have. I missed quite a few meetings, as you probably all know, because I didn't, I was I made a mistake.
We're good. Are you done?
I am done, yeah.
I went to West Branch Township and, uh, they ain't got a lot going on. They're done collecting the property taxes, the people that'll have to come to courthouse, and they were working on their budget, that pretty much would tell you. That was it for me.
That's it.
Um, last week I got a pretty big report, um, I've got a lot of meetings coming up, my township, I want solo township is next week. Uh, did have a transit meeting this past Tuesday, we're still on two weeks' schedule there, uh, was a good meeting. We did, uh, uh, in the last couple of weeks, we were able to get one new hire, got another one in the works. And then Ray had, uh, another employee who used to drive for us, about eight years ago. Um, he was a real good employee, reached out to him that had interests, so, so that's very good. Um, I know I've stated a few times, we know the importance of our Saturday service, because that is our number one complaint. Really, really, we're shooting for April first, but just being realistic with everything, it possibly could be in the middle of April, but we're we understand that is a, that would be a big win for us and be goo- good for our county, especially the one that's running the transit. Um, last night I had a cert meeting, which is part of emergency management, I'm actually a cert member. Uh, that, uh, group is getting stronger, getting more assembled. And I know Mike Bowers spoke to us a couple of weeks ago regarding the event in June that will be held at McLaren. We're working on that, a lot of the local fire departments, EMS, uh, is going to be there. Uh, so we'll get more information on that as that, as that gets closer, that's going to be a really good event. Um, but got a number of meetings coming up, so that's all I have right now.
Commissioner Scott?
I attended the City of West Branch meeting, they, they just had some routine business to take care of. Um, wasn't that long of a meeting. Have other township meetings that'll be coming up and uh, of course Parks and Rec with Commissioner Simmons, but she covered it very well. Uh, so I'll have more for the next meeting.
I attended three meetings this week, uh, Churchill Township was Monday night, they approved the gypsy moth, uh, spraying, and individual was there and gave description and details and the plan moving forward. They are also talking about a possibility of a park with some of their ARPA funds. Um, they have a access, they own some property that, um, is on the Wrightford River. And they are talking about putting in a day park for residents in, uh, Churchill Township to have access to the Wrightford River. So they're in the beginning stages of that, they also discussed their budget. Um, a touch, I, I did get some concerns about their budget and a possible special, special election. Um, so, uh, Hill Township also talked about that, how to plan the budget, prepare for the budget, not knowing if it's going to be a special election, and they said they had to upfront the cost, they get reimbursed, but they had to up, upfront the cost on that. Then also voicing concerns of whether or not they had to do the new, which they don't believe they do, the seven-day sitting or nine-day sitting. Yes, my townships are really voicing concerns about that.
I know, and when I was at, two weeks ago, when I was at my conference, the bureau was there. They don't have any information for us, they don't know how it's going to work, pretty much.
It's more metropolitan area, not our area.
Correct.
Yeah, what is this?
The new laws for elections.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, the proposition that passed, um, is going to significantly change how elections are done. They're going to open it up to nine days before the election or which is going to, it's going to be huge, especially on the budgets.
I mean, here's nine day, I mean, nine days of added
election workers, everything to do with it, it's going to, it's going to be a significant increase in the budget, and they're not really giving us any direction on what to tell people right now, because they don't know. So I'm hoping after the May election, that they'll have more answers for us, and I'll be able to share it with the clerks. Um, but I don't, they're reaching out to me too, and I I don't have any information for them.
They're trying to plan and, and.
I know, it's, it's horrible.
And a lot of the individuals out work, they cannot take their, they're not willing to take their vacation time to sit at a pool. Um, I know the last election, they were there the night before, and, and I think one person out of all my townships showed up. But I heard, anyway, so they're all voicing concerns, so you're going to get a lot bombarded with questions. So if you get more information, can you bring it to us as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Hill Township, they, they passed their budget. Um, they same pay, they didn't do any increases there, they're also, um, they share a fire department, and there's some discussion going on. Uh, with their collaboration there with the fire department. They're going to have a pretty big upcoming meeting, um, related to the lake levels for George Lake. So it sounds like that next one's going to be pretty well, uh, attended. They also are talking about doing some renovations to their township hall up there, that's a very nice township hall. Um, it's a very nice area, I wasn't really familiar with it, but there's a lot of little lakes around there, and it's a, a very nice hall. So, I also attended last night the nine-one-one meeting, they did hire two new employees that are currently part-time, but will be, um, transitioned over to full-time with, once their training is done. They had no overtime again once, uh, this past month. Um, they also passed last night a contract for continuing education. The dispatchers have to get so many continuing education hours per year, and they're going with a one-year contract.
Okay.
Um, for a agency that is state certified, that is online, so that will cut down on their travel, um, expenses. Looks like a pretty good approach, and I can see how that, uh, that pans out for them. They had agreements over there that was resolved without any complications, so that was good news. And I think that I brought something to Tim that's going to be, uh, put on the committee of the whole for further discussion next week, related to surcharges. Um, we're looking into some things, so. That's it for me. Um, questions? Item fourteen, general public comments, this is the last of public comments, same rules apply. One, state your name for the record, two, speak only to the chairperson, three, stand behind the podium when speaking, four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. And this is for any subject matter, is there any public comment in the room? Come on up.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm Joe Pereira, I'm superintendent with More Prescott Area Schools. And I just wanted to give you an update on our school resource officer. We've got some new commissioners since we entered into this partnership for a school resource officer. I don't have specific data for you, but I can tell you just from observation, it's, it's absolutely a needed resource, uh, very well received in the community and throughout the school. He's building relationships with kids, K-12, and that means, uh, disciplines going down. Fewer discipline issues throughout the day, which means kids are learning in the classroom. And he's, he's going out on, uh, uh, home visits from time to time to, if there's an issue about attendance. So, you know, he's getting kids to school, which means kids are learning. So i- it's, it's a benefit all the way around. So if you like specific data, uh, touch base with, with, uh, Ms. David, and she can reach out to me if you'd like specific information, I'd be more than happy to provide that for you. But, uh, I thought I'd give you a quick update, and we really appreciate the collaboration, so, thank you.
Mr. Prairie, I served on the EDC board with you, you're, uh, uh, very sorry to read about your retirement.
Oh, not me.
I don't blame you there.
So it's, it, it has been, I don't want to get emotional.
Been a huge blessing for the community.
Thank you.
And I, I, I.
It's, it's been an honor serving students and community uh, for so many years. We've made a lot of good progress, changed the district for the better, and I, I appreciate all the, the kind words. Uh, but countdown has begun, I've got senioritis, just like my seniors, but we're still getting through it. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Any comments from Mr. Prairie? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? In the room, any public comment on the phone? Public comment, we got item fifteen, we have a closed session that is scheduled, correct?
So.
Emotion, emotion will be necessary to enter into closed session to consult the county attorney regarding specific litigations in the matter of Kerry and Glengateras versus County of Oglema, and to conduct a strategy session connected with the negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement. Additional business may be considered at the end of the closed session.
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session for those reasons.
I'll second.
We have motion Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Simmons to go into closed session, roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny Davis?
Yes.
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 Okay, can we take any just before that?
The kids are all going to come into my office when we want to close.
Okay, got to go. I only got about ten minutes, I gotta go.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, go back into open session.
Need a second?
I will second that here.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Wiltsey, roll call.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Okay, we're now back in the open session at, um, Ninety-Five.
I think we got some, some minute here.
We're back in the open session, read the resolution for, uh, memorandum of understanding for the United Steel Workers, we need a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of, or memorandum of understanding with the United Steel Workers.
Do you need a second?
Yep.
Mr. Mahew, Mr. Mahew, second, any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Need a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, say it, aye, yeah, yeah, yes. I say it with enthusiasm. Do say it.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.